Are we all ready?
Yes, ma'am, we have all trustees present, except for the mayor. We have a quorum.
Okay. Item on the agenda is the safety message and invocation and pledge of allegiance. Ronnie, Mr. Ronnie de los Santos.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board of Trustees. First and foremost, I'll review the evacuation procedures so that we are all prepared to be safe in an event of an emergency. If you hear a fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass doors to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in the front of the building or AT&amp;T parking lot at the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify their appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure that we are prepared. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We come before you today to give honor and praise. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We ask that you give, we ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals. Amen. Now, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I have a legal question. My apologies for that. Item number three, which is public comment preregistration, of course, took place Wednesday, November the 13th.
All right. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have one person registered to speak. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, can you please cue the timer? And our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange. All right, since I don't see her here, I don't think we've got any other speakers today.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to, we had no public speakers, so we're going to go ahead and move on to number, number four, which is Chair's remark. So there's actually a lot to cover. So again, let me see. Grills Giving, wow. I think we exceeded the goal from last year. It was the size of a football field and probably a little bit longer, and I couldn't be happier, not only just for the community, but really the great team that put this together. You know, why was Grills Giving important? It's just another testament to the commitment of internal employees as well as the community to provide residential energy assistance partnerships, to support the Residential Assistance Partnership REAP. We raised a total of 406K was raised, and that's commendable. So thank you, I believe Evan's team did the most fundraising through recruitment of different supporters and sponsors. And so again, I want to thank the team I got to grilled with. They were called Smoking Hot, all-female barbecue team, but what's most important about this team is it's a steam, again, science, technology, engineering, really smart women that worked really hard, had the privilege of working with them till 11 o'clock, making sure everything was working, and then serving all day long. And those team members included Jennifer Barrera, Amanda Gomez, Shermilla Gura, I don't want to butcher the last name, but it's G-U-R-R-A-L-A, Melissa Gutierrez, Lori Lopez, Robin Pate, Anna Marie Rangel, Brenda Rangel, Cynthia Reyna, and Maria Seth, and Alicey, and another last name is S-W-I-N-T-E-K, Jennifer Garza, Vasquez, Trish Villanueva. And again, thank you for all of you who participated, including our community, our partners, our stakeholders, because again, this is for a great cause. And so thank you for supporting, again, the Residential Energy Assistance Partnership REAP. The next thing I want to point out is Energy Angels. Some of you have seen this icon before, and here it is, and I'm glad that we have this backdrop on the screen. And so this is just another, another form of giving back to the community as we fast approach the holidays. Energy Angel, again, is another form of, another program that we have for assistance. And so there are, again, many ways that you can support CPS and a resident, so I encourage you, and again, you can see, you can scan it and give the energy, the gift of energy to a family this year. Again, as we enter the season of giving, if you'd like to support REAP or Energy Angels, please give CPS a call. And again, these are wonderful programs. I've been very successful over the year, and we couldn't do this without you. And again, Energy, CPS Energy launches Energy Angels program in 2021 to allow a person to make payments towards a customer's energy bill. The program allows donations to be made to a specific person by providing either an account number, address, or phone number. Those who are not donating to a specific person can choose to donate to a general fund. The general fund, again, prioritizes customers in need who are behind on their energy bills and will apply the credit to CPS Energy customers who do not qualify for, for the utilities' Residential Energy Assistance Program REAP. Again, give Energy Advisors a call at 210-353-222. Again, that phone number is 210-353-2222. And talk about how you can become an Energy Angel this holiday season. Again, these are wonderful programs. A new way also to pay for added, for, that we just recently added for customers' convenience, and there's a graphic, I believe, behind me as well for this, and that includes a QR code to manage my account page. And so again, we recently launched a new digital wallet payment technology options designed to offer customers more flexibility, convenience, improved customer service when paying their energy bills. Digital wallets will be available for customers to make payments through their Google or Apple Pay accounts. Additionally, CPS Energy now accepts American Express cards, further expanding payment options for our customers. The addition of these new payment options is another step in the utilities' commitment investing in technology and represents CPS Energy's ongoing commitment to improve customer service. Once again, customers can now use their digital wallets to make payments securely through CPS Energy Manage My Pay MMA. So again, this is a secure method, just another way to be able to pay, again, bills and have options in how you want to do that, check, e-commerce, and now digital wallet. Okay, so another new thing is to please look out for your personalized value letter. For that, we don't have an image behind me, but basically what it is is commitment to transparency and personalized customer engagement. As part of this commitment, the team has developed a personalized value letter that will be provide, that will provide an overview of each customer, energy use, and step contribution amount. Another transparency, but better yet, not just transparency, but to truly understand, again, how you're engaging with us and vice versa, and the value of what we do. This is the second year we'll be sending this letter. The letter will also include, again, details of customer, how they can stay engaged, they can provide feedback to Horizon 2050, and explore assistance programs. Customers will receive the letters this week, 11/18, via mail or email based on their billing preferences. So again, the letter will look something like this, and it's two pages. I believe you can go to the website today, or you'll be able to download a PDF, but you'll also receive it. And so it's, again, a good opportunity, again, for us to stress, again, your contribution, what we do with that, and again, highlight the existing 2027, and then we want to hear from you again for Horizon 2050. And again, it's a long-term plan that will address the future of energy in San Antonio through the next few decades. So those are my chairman's remarks. Again, just want to, a quick highlight, thank you for all of you who participated in Grills Giving. Again, just want to make sure that there are forms to support our community during the holidays, and that, again, is through REAP or Energy Angels. And then again, we have a more convenient way for customers to pay, and that is through the QR code to manage my accounts. And then in closing, again, you should be receiving a personalized value letter. So again, those are my closing comments. So the next thing we're going to move on to is to the consent agenda. And so before I go over what we're going to discuss today, I'm going to go ahead under D to pull out two procurement items to be discussed in person versus just voting on them on item D. And that would be the commodity material goods and the commodity material goods. Richard, and Richard, again, for, one is for miscellaneous transmission conductors, and the other one is for miscellaneous transmission hardware. I would like those to be discussed. Versus on the general consent agenda. And then the other item I would like to also pull is the item number under Board Committee Reports A, which is a nomination committee meeting held on November the 4th. We're going to pull that item out, and that item will be added to December's agenda.
For clarification, then, would you also like me to pull a regular agenda item number seven, or do you want to keep that on the regular agenda? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Do you want to go ahead and request a motion, second, and approval of the remaining consent agenda items?
Yes, yes. Second. Open for discussion.
So, yeah, I have a clarification question. If we could put up Slide 8, it's also labeled Page 1 of 1, entitled Attachment B: Summary of Changes to the CPS Energy South Texas Project Nuclear Decommissioning Trust Investment Policy. Is there a way we can put that up? I'm asking to put it up on the screen.
This is a statement.
It's a clarification question.
Okay.
I think that's legitimate. We're on the consent agenda, and it's approved en masse, but I have a, well, you could find it. A, B, or C?
Yeah, I made a motion for A, B, and C, and that's the one I made a motion for.
It's, it's, it's for B, Financial Policies Annual Approval.
Is it Financial Policy and Annual?
Yeah, and it's, it's a question of clarification, but I would like for us to put up Slide 8, Page 1 of 1, unless we can't do that.
Okay, if I can ask the A, B folks, you'll have to give us a moment, because we didn't know that we were pulling up any materials for consent agenda, so I believe that it is, starts with Page 4 of the board packet.
No, it's, it's this page right here. It's Slide 8.
Okay, proceed to page, is it Page 8 in your packets? That will help them.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, yes, it's Page 8, and then at another place, it says Page 1 of 1.
Yeah, oh, it's Page 8.
I think that's it, right in, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
So, let me read the second sentence of the first bullet point. "The funds governed by this policy are invested over a long period of time to provide for the eventual decommissioning of CPS Energy's 40% interest in the STP nuclear facility." Now, if you just put up the next page. And and that's entitled Nuclear Decommissioning Trust Investment Policy Resolution. I won't read them, but in the second and sixth recitals, and a recital is a paragraph that begins with the word whereas, there are references to the two STP master trusts, the 28% trust and the 12% trust. So as we all know, earlier this year, in a deal with Constellation Energy, CPS Energy increased its stake in the South Texas project by 2% to 42%, giving it another 52 megawatts of the plant's capacity. And so my question is, how does this additional 2% figure into the policy you're asking this board to approve today?
It does not, sir. We haven't closed that deal yet, so it'll be addressed in the future, but it's not being addressed today.
So the, the deal hasn't been closed?
It still requires regulatory approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Steen, does that meet your requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
That we can vote on it?
That's, that's, that answers my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Trustee Dr. Mackey? Trustee Steen? It was, the motion was to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number eight. Oh, I'm sorry, the committee reports, I'm sorry. But we pulled A already, so we don't need to do that.
Yes, the remaining agenda items on six are community input, committee reports, subpart A, B, and C.
Right. I can, motion to approve items, community input, committee reports, A, B, and C?
No motion is required. You just need to.
Okay, then we're good, then. Okay, you're confusing me, I thought we were good. Okay, so, discussion? And there's no discussion. Move on to the next item?
Yes, ma'am, rather than reading them aloud, we'll just include, include them in the minutes.
Okay. All righty, so I just want to gain clarity, because it seems before I skipped, I went straight to eight, and then I was told we had to go back, so we're exactly where we are right now on the agenda.
We, because we pulled number seven, or we pulled number seven and deferred it, I think that we have two options. We could go ahead and insert the two procurement.
Procurement items, that's exactly what I wanted, yeah.
Okay, so, Richard, we will start with the Miscellaneous Transmission Conductors, which was listed originally under Approval Consent Agenda as D, Subpart 1. So that's this.
So I have a question about procedure. Is, is the material on this item in our book?
We had this material through committees.
Yeah, the committee met, I don't know, months ago, I think.
No, actually, they also followed up with you, because one of the things that I had asked originally, just to be clear, I had originally looked at the agenda, and I felt that it was really packed, and since often, some of my colleagues have stressed the need for more transparency, I had personally had the team call you and review these materials and ask permission to put them originally under approval of consent items, and I've made the decision to be more transparent and making sure that we have them presented.
Well.
Just for, I hope I can clear it up. The items on these procurements are included in your procurement packet, so you have all the information. There simply was not a separate PowerPoint presentation. So if you go to your procurement packet in your board packets, you will see all the information on the procurement.
Yes. And in addition to that, we went through PowerPoint presentations through committees, and then calls were made. So you should be pretty well-versed on all these items.
Now, let me, let me mention something. I'm pretty familiar with this booklet, and I could be wrong, but I don't think it's in the, it's, it's in the procurement packet.
It's Page 32 and 34.
Oh, yes, it is, all right. Since I thought it was the consent agenda, I missed it, so my apologies.
That's okay, Mr. Steen. I always love it that you're so thorough. Go ahead, Richard.
Okay, so for the first one, I guess in order of the book here, let me pull, let's see here. We'll go through the transmission conductors first. And so this one is a, hold on one second here, I got my.
Your time, Richard, I'm so sorry for the last minute. That's okay.
Okay, so this one is a, a rebid, and this one's for transmission conductors, the wires that we string on transmission lines. The old contract was for five years, and we had that value at $9.5 million, and it expires in December. And then we're upping the contract, so we bid it out, and we had four respondents, and we're awarding this to two bidders, Techline and Erby. The value for this new contract is for $90 million, and the reason we're, we're increasing the value from, you know, basically 10 to 90 is just because of all the transmission projects ERCOT has released to us. We have some really big projects going south, 50-plus mile lines that we're rebuilding, plus all the large loads, we're having to reconduct for a lot of transmission towers. And so basically, that's that procurement item.
I'll look to my colleagues, do you want him, would you want, do you vote one item by item, or hear discussion on both and make, then vote?
We're going to have to vote on them separately, so it may make sense to go.
Okay, does any of my colleagues have any questions?
Again, Mr. Medina, I was, I was caught off guard by this, but in your evaluation criteria, which is on Page 32.
Yes, sir.
I think typically in your evaluation criteria, you use 100 points, right?
That's correct.
All right. And in this particular one, you've, you've got overall cost is 40?
Yes, sir.
I think we had one in a meeting not long ago where the, the overall cost was, was only given 10.
Yeah, since this one's materials, all they're, they're providing just materials, the other one were service contracts, they're a little different. And so this is just strictly, we're purchasing wire materials.
Is that what we call a commodity?
Yes.
Contract? So that's a difference.
So anything like this would, you'd have the, the same evaluation criteria?
Yeah.
And you'd always give it 40 for overall cost?
Both the ones in here are 40, yes.
All right. And, and, and just a thought, and I'll have more to say about this later, but I think with my concerns about finances that I've expressed.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to think that, that we would be, be giving overall cost a higher weight in this, in this process.
Okay, and, and we look for best value, because at the end of the day, we're trying to make sure that we have the materials that we can put up, and not all materials are the same. So every vendor makes different types of, of wiring, they have different cores, they have different types of materials, so they're just different. It's not the exact same item that we're purchasing from different people. They're, they're different types of conductors we're putting up.
Is it fair to say these are specialized, again?
Yes, they're very specialized material.
And then with still short supply chain shortages, it's important, again, that when we're making decisions for vendors or for products, specifically in this case commodities, that yes, we always consider costs, but sometimes you cannot spare costs when it comes to, again, making procurement decisions for, again, highly specialized equipment that ensures resiliency. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is. And we look at the company's experience, their warranties, there's a lot of different variables that go into the decision-making. If they're not handling the materials right, or shipping them right, or we're not getting them on time, it impacts all these projects, and they're tied to customers and reliability of the grid.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Is there any of the trustees that have questions? Okay, if we can go ahead and do roll call?
I don't believe we have a motion to approve yet.
Okay, motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve? Second.
Trustee Dr. Mackey? Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item?
The next item is, is similar in nature, so it's for transmission line hardware. So it's all the hardware that we attach the wiring to, the insulators, all the dead ends that go on the big towers. So this, this was a rebid. The current contract was for, whoops, I have the, yeah, $9.9 million, and we're increasing this one to $30 million. And the same goes here, it's, it's, we're looking at best value, like Mr. Steen asked, it's the same weightings for all, both of these, since they're commodity items. And this is all TCOS recoverable, since it's transmission systems.
Okay. Does any colleague have questions, Mr. Steen?
No.
I move approval of this item.
If we could do a roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey? Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor? Vice Chair? Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If we can move to the next item?
And just for clarity, we are now on the data center and large load presentation marked agenda item eight.
Good afternoon. Myself and Richard Medina are going to speak with you all about trends in large load as well as developments that are occurring in our industry around data center development. So today, we're going to talk about some of the headlines that are occurring across the globe, discuss some industry trends that we're seeing, discuss the state of the state here in Texas, as well as our utility. Richard's going to talk to you all about the transmission studies that we have undertaken, what we, we'll discuss what we're doing today, and some of the options that we're evaluating moving forward. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't surprise any of you, I'm sure. Every day, you pick up a newspaper or get a news feed, and there's a new announcement related to, you know, data centers, hyperscalers, that are striking really interesting and eye-catching deals. There's recently been an announcement that Three Mile Island, which is a nuclear plant that had been deactivated, is actually going to be restarted to help with Microsoft's data center needs. We're seeing really a tremendous amount of growth with these large data centers and hyperscalers partnering with different technology. Nuclear is certainly part of the solution, but you're seeing quite a bit of development across some of the largest investor-end utilities in the, in the U.S. And, and there's, there's some fundamental questions about the drivers behind the data centers, you know, AI, large language models, machine learning. These technologies are helping us solve some significant human and societal challenges, but they're extremely thirsty when it comes to power and water. And I'll touch on some of the, the statistics here in just a moment, but we have never seen as an industry demands and increases for power like we're seeing right now. Probably the closest was when there was adoption of HVAC technology, but it truly is a stunning amount of growth that everyone in our industry is grappling with, struggling to, to meet these aggressive timelines, and we are no different here in central Texas. So looking at industry trends, we belong to a group called the Electric Power Research Institute. They're a terrific group that puts out industry-focused research. They recently released a paper detailing the data center electric load growth in the United States. So right now, in 2023, data centers accounted for about 4% of the total U.S. electric consumption. By 2030, that's going to increase almost more than double, increase to over 9%. There are a range of outcomes depending on, you know, the, the scenarios that, that you're modeling, whether it's a low growth through potentially higher growth range. So, you know, it's possible that that number could be as high as 15% by the end of, of this decade. And, and what, you know, what is, what is driving this consumption is inherent in the computing technology. Data centers, and those in particular that are tied to AI, consume anywhere from 10 to 15. Data centers and those in particular that are tied to AI consume anywhere from ten to fifty times the energy per square foot when you're comparing that to a typical office building. So large usage, high density, and, you know, really, really, really challenging technology that is taking off at an accelerated pace. When you look at it by states, Texas is actually number two in the United States relative to load growth, only outpaced by Virginia. There are a number of factors behind why Texas is so attractive. But certainly, you know, our ability through ERCOT and the PUC to route and site transmission quickly is driving interest in Texas. But with all of that interest, we're seeing those timelines around interconnection study and a commercialization of projects become longer and longer. At the April twenty-third board meeting of ERCOT, they announced that ERCOT is expected to see one hundred and fifty-two gigawatts of new load by 2030. This is new load that they didn't anticipate a year prior. And a good portion of that load is coming in the form of data centers. There is a tremendous amount of growth also occurring in the Permian Basin that makes up that additional new load. So right now, at ERCOT, you know, touching on the one hundred and fifty-two gigawatts of new load, there's almost... There's just shy of two thousand active generation interconnection requests. When you add all of those interconnection requests, they're quite a bit more than the one hundred and fifty-two gigawatts. They're actually closer to three hundred and fifty gigawatts. And for reference point, ERCOT is about an eighty-GB system at peak. So when you look at it relatively, we're seeing a doubling or more of electric consumption in our region. Also, you know, a key happening that's occurring, and with the eighty-eighth legislature, House Bill Fifty-Sixty-Six effectively allowed ERCOT to begin to study prospective loads in planning forecasts. And that's going... That change is actually what's driving a considerable increase in expected growth. But that one decision alone increased the forecast by forty gigawatts. You know, it is challenging to determine how much of this load is actually going to show up by when. But one thing that we know is this is happening in every part of the United States, and we are seeing considerable activity with these data centers to co-locate at large power facilities. With all of this growth, we are seeing increased transmission constraints throughout the state. At San Antonio in particular, we're sitting at the geographic center of the state, but we also are a key component and a key intersection in the transmission system. So we do, you know, expect to see increased flow-through transmission constraints, even separate and apart from our load here in this region. So that's sort of an initial take on what's occurring in the industry. Richard Medina and his team have been doing a terrific job. They've been working to conduct transmission studies, really to help us prepare for what is here. It's not just coming, it's what's here. So I'm going to turn it over to him to discuss our transmission study process.
Hi, good afternoon. So on the transmission studies, you know, in the past, with these large loads, our systems all had a lot of capacity across ERCOT. And when a large load or data center came in, basically what we would do is run some initial studies and look at the loads. And then we would do, basically, just do an extension of a transmission line to a substation and serve that customer. With all the growth in Texas and all the power flows that are changing with renewables and retirements of generation, like Elena mentioned, you know, it's putting strains on the system that nobody's ever seen before. And so even ERCOT is working with all the transmission providers to try and figure out how do we do better load flow analysis and studies to get a handle of the loads themselves, because they need to understand where these loads are going to actually run studies. So what we've been doing is working with our, you know, the planning groups with ERCOT to look at interconnect studies, the processes to get these studies in the system. But basically, what's happening today is also that ERCOT plans on contingencies, meaning that you can connect the customer today on a blue-sky day, and we can serve them. But ERCOT's looking at what happens if a power plant trips, what happens if a transmission line trips? How do the power flows change, and what happens to the stability of the system? And that is really the key thing that's going on here, is looking at stability studies. So we've been working with some of our partners, Hitachi and Burns &amp; McDonald, to run different type of studies with all the loads that we have here on the transmission system. And those are ongoing studies. And in addition, ERCOT every year puts out new base case studies, meaning, you know, last summer was one of the hottest summers around, and I think it was over a hundred degrees pretty much all summer. And so the load flows and loads actually increase. So then ERCOT revises base case studies, and then everybody redoes studies based on those new base loads. And then out of that is generated a bunch of transmission projects. And so basically, right now, what we have in the queue is we have... Today, we have three switching stations, and what those are, large substations that bring power off the three forty-five KV system down to the one thirty-eight, so we can serve substations to customers. And so in the queue right now, we're building one on south of town, which is Howard Road. And then they just approved another one on the east side. So those are two approved new switching stations. And then with these new studies, we're looking at another switching station that hasn't been approved yet, but we're submitting the paperwork to ERCOT on the west side to help with load growth. And then there'll be another switching station on the west side also, two stations, one in Lotus and one a little further down west to help with all these large loads that Elena talked about, because they're congregating on the west side of town. So just over... Just with the projects that we have today that are approved, we're looking at one point three billion dollars worth of transmission projects over the next five years. And that will bring additional capacity to serve a lot of these large loads. And of course, all this is recovered through T-cost, so as we build systems, we will go through and recover that cost of T-cost.
Let me just punctuate on this slide that there's no shortcut to this work. Because of the state regulatory process we have to go through to get these projects approved, so we can get them in a T-cost, you know, it's anywhere from twenty-four to forty-eight months in some cases for some big transmission line work. So while we are working hard to compress the timelines that we control, we do not control the state timeline. So I just want to make sure that there's no, you know, discretion in the time it takes to get a transmission line approved through the process. That just is what it is.
Yeah. And also, on the slide here, some of these projects are reliability projects. And later in the presentation, we'll be giving two project updates, one on SAP fifteen and one for a Howard reconductoring project. And those are just another two projects that are in the queue right now that we're looking for board approval to proceed to construction. But like Rudy mentioned, a lot of these are tied to just load flows that are changing. ERCOT has constraints going down south, so they're asking to expedite some of these transmission projects. And so we're looking real hard to go and figure out how do we expedite some of these projects that typically take three years, and we're trying to expedite it in half the time. So...
Does anybody have questions?
I think there's a couple more slides.
Okay. Questions on the customer engagement component?
One thing, so I understand you're wanting us to kind of quickly move through this.
Actually, I don't. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just wanted to share a couple of things about what we're doing here at CPS. And right now, just for context, our system peaks at just shy of six thousand megawatts or six gigs. We have in some state of contract two... Close to two gigs of interest, so two thousand megawatts, and approximately another four thousand that have demonstrated interest in coming to our service territory. So as you can imagine, having a business that has this kind of phenomenal growth is... Can be challenging, right, to manage? And so what we're focused on is making sure we're engaged with both community and customer groups through chambers and various working groups that we're involved in. We've updated our website. We have links to ERCOT's transmission queue and projects. And each of these projects are unique. It's not a simple first-in, first-served. Where these projects get cited is really a function of power flows in the area. And so, you know, they're highly complex projects, and we're working very closely with the large-load customers to help them through the interconnection process. Some of the options, alternative options, that we're also evaluating and working with prospective customers on are potentially putting on site power generation for their project. We have developers who are interested in having their own power plants, a small natural gas turbine or combined cycle. We're looking at newer technology as well, fuel cells, you know, renewable plus firming storage. We're also looking at the customer owning some of the infrastructure, whether that's private transmission or substation, and looking at how ultimately we can serve these customers and meet their schedules. We're also looking at, you know, ways that we can work with them to help with peak load curtailment. So certainly, to the degree that we can have customers with the ability of failing over data center activities to other parts of the country or other parts of their operation and dialing down power here can certainly help with, you know, being able to get those facilities constructed more quickly. And there's... You'll hear a lot of buzz around this. They're called GETS, Grid Enhancing Technologies. But Richard and his team are very involved with Eppery and others to look at, you know, how can we much more clearly identify what our transmission line ratings are in a more dynamic fashion that can free up some incremental capacity where, you know, we can ensure that the line isn't overrated? And there's quite a bit of development going on in advanced conductors as well to be able to have conductors that are more efficient and can carry more power and can remove heat more effectively. So just wanted to give the board an update that we're looking at new technology. We're looking at processes and working with customers to address this really challenging, but, you know, rapidly accelerating grid requirement. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and if you all have any at this time.
Sure. Mr. Steen, you have any questions, comments?
If you could go to Slide Nine. So, of course, that catches my attention when you say we expect to spend about one point three billion in the next five years to add a load-serving capacity of about around one gigawatt by 2029. And you mentioned reimbursement. And for people that are listening in, I know you call it T-cost, but it stands for?
Transmission Cost of Service.
Right. And so you're saying we're going to be reimbursed for that entire amount of money?
Yes, sir.
All right. And tell me about that process.
So the process, we're going... We're right now getting ready to do a full T-cost rate case. So it's similar to a rate filing, and so you're going through showing all your expenses and recovering them through the T-cost process. And then in between, if we're building lines in between, we can do partial filings to recover that money.
But is there ever any back and forth on whether something should be reimbursed?
Yes, there's always a view of looking to make sure that you're not adding additional stuff that shouldn't be reimbursed by all Texans, because the T-cost is recovered across the entire state. So they're always looking to make sure you're not adding extra stuff.
That happens as part of the approval process. We go to ERCOT, we say, you know, we're doing their modeling, we're doing our modeling. We say we think we need a line from point A to point B. ERCOT, you know, tells you what they think is appropriate, and then we go and design it, and we submit it for reimbursement. So that is why we have to go get the line approved before we begin the process of spending money on it, so that, you know, those costs are just and reasonable, which is part of the interim filing process. Next year, as you all know, we'll be going in for a reconciliation of our existing transmission cost of service with the PUC. It'll be a full-blown T-cost case that every utility, every transmission provider has to go through. There will be a reconciliation where they look at our investment, they look at our depreciation schedules, they do a full deep dive, and they will reconcile what they think our T-cost should be based on the fact that we haven't been in since 2006. So every five years, we will, from beginning next year, we will be going in for a full review of our T-cost case. But almost immediately after we go through that process, six months later, we'll come back in for another interim T-cost filing. Because, and I've said it, it's not, you know, we've been transparent. We've got over fifty segments of transmission to build at one point three, one point five billion dollars over the next five years. So, you know, so all of that will be part of the approval process through ERCOT and the Public Utility Commission.
So, thank you, Mr. Garza. So we were talking last meeting about risk and thinking about financial risk. So there's not a financial risk here. You're confident that if we spend this money, we'll get every penny back?
The most... How can I put this? The most consistent return we can get as a utility making investments is through T-cost. That is a return that we know if it's approved by the regulatory process, we will be able to add that and earn, you know, our approved rate return by the Public Utility Commission. So T-cost is probably the safest investment that we can make.
Good. Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions, and just... And again, you can Google and get different statistics. But if I'm not mistaken, between 2019 and 2023, commercial power consumption in Texas grew by thirteen terawatts. Thirteen terawatts, largely due to data center growth. And so I think Mr. Steen posed a really good question, and so that was really going to be my follow-up question. I think there's a couple of things that I'm not necessarily... There's a concern and not a concern, right? So there's a concern that, yes, we get reimbursed. So what happens if we go through this process, and we determine it takes ten dollars, but we only get reimbursed for eight? So how will we offset if there's a pushback for only getting covered for eight and not ten? Would that be financing creatively through bonds, grants, et cetera?
So Rudy touched on this. One point of clarification I want to make is we are both a transmission provider, and we also are a load-serving entity. So we provide transmission services to the state, and we are load-serving entity. So we get reimbursed for our transmission costs associated with being a transmission provider. But we also pay our load-serving entity component of the benefit we get. So it's... I want to make sure that we're clear, that we are two... We work on both sides of the equation, so it isn't dollar-for-dollar. And Corey can probably correct me with that. But relative to recovery, so there are a number of processes that go into developing this transmission plan. First up is, most of these projects are going through something called regional planning at ERCOT. And that is a group of transmission providers that meet with ERCOT staff and develop the ERCOT transmission plan. And so that's the key component that Rudy's talking about. When you get an approved project through that process, that ensures that you can build that project and build it into your rate case for recovery. No one can ever say in a rate case you're going to get recovery on absolutely everything. But there are prudency standards that RPG uses to ensure that we're building what we need. And it's up to us as a utility to provide good cost estimates and to execute projects well. So when we go into a transmission cost of service filing, those are the things that the PUC will be looking at. Was it approved? Was it needed? And did you execute the project well? And so that's a long answer to say, I can't say yes, that we will get dollar-for-dollar, but there are a number of processes in place to ensure we get good recovery. And we've done interim filings and have had good results. But ultimately, it's about us designing, building, and executing with excellence.
Go ahead, Dr. Mer.
Elena, I have two questions for you. They're kind of abstract, so I'm not expecting a complete answer. But I feel like you're our resident futurist, so I want to pose these to you. So not to make the situation sound worse even, but when you talk about the projected needs of these large-load entities, are you also folding in the climate change over the years? Because it's not just the data processing, it's cooling those places as well. So is that factored in, or does that potentially make it even worse as we go forward? So is that factored in or is that potentially make it even worse as we go forward?
So I'll give you the, the physics answer first, which is yes, the, the consumption is absolutely factoring it in. Now, relative to increased emissions and impact to climate, these kind of doubling and in some areas, Encore just announced they've got 80 gigs, gigawatts of data center in their queue. When you think about that amount of growth, it, it is, it is going to have an increase in emissions. That's just, that's, that's just coming. Certainly, I think a lot of us are going to seek ways to meet power gen needs as cleanly as possible, but it will have, it will have an impact on, on emissions and on water consumption. A lot of these data centers are water cooled, air cool technologies improving, but it is, it also is a large consumer of, of water. So the answer is it is going to have, you know, a compounding impact to climate.
Yeah, I, I guess one thing I would add in my conversations with my counterparts across the country, one of the things, and it's in here, you know, when, I think a lot of, of these, these large loads are going to inherently, you know, be expected to, to bring their own capacity with them so that in times of the summer when we might need them to go offline for a couple hours, we can do that to preserve the power availability for, you know, the, the broader population. So, so onsite power generation, that's primarily to give us flexibility, you know, to, to, to make our system more resilient, you know, which I think all has climate change implications. I mean, our demand response programs are kind of predicated on that, you know? And, and these folks all have their own sustainability goals, at least the ones that, that we're talking to right now that, where they're paying attention to that. So I think that's one positive is that, you know, they're looking to add solar generation, add batteries and add, you know, backup generation where possible for the, for the greater good.
Okay. And yeah, I just meant they're going to need even more energy than we think as it gets hotter. The other thing, and I'm not advocating this, I just wanted to get your reaction to it because I know what some people say is if you look at the big picture, it's a little bit different into the future because while you have these huge loads right now, that AI in particular will have the effect of increasing the efficiency of other industries. And so they will be using less over time. And I know that's discounted by a lot of people, but I wanted to know what you thought about it.
I think, I think it, it is a potential outcome. AI, you know, as I study use, use cases and some of the really, I think deeply impactful problems that, that researchers and technologists are pointing AI at, it truly is about, you know, improving, improving the health of, of, of the human race and lessening our impact on resources, using automation to drive waste out in general. And so I do think that there will be some complementary reductions or savings. And, and quite honestly, one thing that we haven't touched on, but something that I think about, you know, anytime you have this sort of surge in an industry where you're seeing tremendous growth and they almost, almost, you know, needing to get data centers at any cost, there naturally is an evolution of the technology just because of that, that capital pressure. And I, I do think that over time there will be improvements in, in the computing technology to drive out the energy. But today, we're using today's technology to, to solve this. And so absolutely, I think AI has, has the ability and is proving here, even in its really first significant year of development, to be powerful in accelerating problem solving. And, and you see it in, in Nobel Prize winning developments on, on protein development, right, for malaria resistance and cancer treatments. And I think if we can point it at improvements in, in, in manufacturing and, and other types of processes, you'll see companion accelerated improvements and, and reduced waste.
Just to kind of build upon, I think what you'd already discussed and what Dr. Romero was concerned, we call it intelligent energy planning that integrates again the advanced technologies and data analytics to optimize. And it also considers in there sustainability, so it supports those goals that were just pointed out. And so again, part of hopefully what would also help with this is again, as we modernize our systems and we can get better information to make faster decisions and pivot and save as well. So thank you in that presentation. I did, I did have one comment that I hope that the future sure person takes into consideration. I know you talked a little bit about that we will be having community input and I know that we have a CIC advisory board, but I do think that a lot of it is complicated. And we, we already asked a couple of questions about sustainability, we've already asked a couple of questions of cost and then just the process in itself that might consider having, you know, its own committee with stakeholders and planning because it's not just about investing the one point, you know, billion, it's also about making sure that the committee truly understands what it means, why it's viable, not viable, and also maybe address any potential misinformation because it is, it is a need, it's the direction that we're going. And yet I, I still think it's very complicated and we have to make it simple. So just something to consider for the future.
More questions or comments? We're going to go ahead and move to item number nine, which is procurement request for approval, architectural services, Lisa Lewis.
Good afternoon, trustees. I am speaking to you today in my capacity as the leader responsible for facilities and going to talk to you briefly about a contract for architectural services. This is a new request. We put out a request for qualifications to solicit these services. And just for context, these services support a variety of in-house projects that we conduct on an annual basis. Shanna will not let me show you pictures of control rooms we've remodeled or pictures of uninterrupted power supply equipment that serves as backup. So you get a picture of the pavilion at our Tuttle location, which is actually a meeting facility that allows us to assemble 500-plus employees in one place at one time. It's the only location we can do that as an example of some of the work that this group does on our behalf. The current contract we have is, it was a six-year, 5.35 million contract for those services and it will expire in December. Our proposed value is 7 million for three years. We received four respondents and the two selected are small, local and diverse. They will work for us on master planning work across all our campuses as we consolidate and modernize locations and conduct feasibility studies for locations, help us with future control rooms and so forth. And I respectfully request your approval to that contract.
Is there a motion? A move to one by me and second by the mayor. Any questions, comments?
Can you please?
Mr. Mackey says he can't find it in his packet.
I know, I'm on item number nine, I'm looking.
It's on page 58 of your packet. This presentation is on 58. And it's also on page 27, I believe, of the procurement packet.
And I don't know if Dr. Mackey would concur, but I think it's confusing when we're going through our board packet to have that separated like it is. Because I've run into the same thing he's running into where you, you're looking at the, at the actual presentation, but not the backup.
Colleagues, it's on page 27 as Dr. Romero stated.
Just for clarity, some of the reasons that that information is separated is because we generally do not highlight some of the information that you are asking about prior to the selection and approval of the procurement.
These procurements are not considered approved until you approve them. And typically we do not notify bidders that they have been selected until after board approval.
All right. Ms. Lewis, so I appreciate the hard work and diligence of you and your team. I trust you understand and appreciate it as trustees, we have three main fiduciary duties and this falls under our duty of care, which requires us to actively participate in meetings, carefully review documents and sometimes ask hard questions. With all due respect, it's part of our job description to challenge management and not just rubber stamp everything that's recommended to us. Looking at that slide three, the current contract is 5.35 million dollars for six years or around 900,000 a year. Proposed contract, 7 million dollars for three years or around 2.3 million dollars per year. The per year expenditure will increase by roughly three times. Please comment.
So there's two reasons for that. The first is that the original contract was put in place prior to the post-pandemic inflation that we saw. So projects like just unto themselves are costing more. The second reason is we are doing more work. Over the last four years, we have made a concerted effort to do much more preventive maintenance and better manage the $6 million budget that we have available to us to take care of the roughly 40 buildings that we do take care of. So we changed our process. Instead of running things to failure and doing break fix, we actually modified our practices, kept the same budget and are now doing many more projects with the, with that work. So this is some of the stuff we're doing. We were able to recapitalize some of this work and helps us further save money, but we've taken our break fix from about 6 million to about 2 million in terms of how we're managing the facilities and then worked to improve locations. And like I said, we're working to consolidate so that we have fewer facilities to take care of. So there is a, there is an increased amount of activity for that purpose.
All right. And then looking at the two winners or awardees, you, you described them both as local and diverse businesses.
Yes, sir.
And so please clarify for me what qualifies them as local? And just for example, does it mean that the firm is headquartered in San Antonio or could it just have a branch office here?
So for CPS Energy, local can be any entity that has an office here. In this case, both of these bidders that we're proposing to select are headquartered here in San Antonio. This is their home. But in some cases, we do select an entity that's local that has an office here, not just, not their headquarters, but these two do have headquarters here. And in both cases, these are small businesses, small according to, to federal NACE codes. I can try to explain it, but please don't ask me to. And, and, and then diverse from their ownership perspective.
Okay. And then as to clarify what you mean by diverse?
So in, in the case of Alta, it is a small hub zone and Hispanic owned business. It qualifies for all three of those designations. And West East is small and Asian American owned and qualifies for both of those designations. And then both again, local, local headquarters.
But, but the two unsuccessful businesses were, were not local and diverse, is that correct?
That's correct.
And again, going back to what Dr. Mackey was asking about, if we could put up slide three of 11 or page 27, are we allowed to do that entitled CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting, November 18th, 2024 Procurement Form 1?
I, I don't have the ability to manage that from where I'm sitting.
I'm sorry, I couldn't even follow that.
Page 27 of the deck is, of the, of the board book is what he's asking for. I can see it, I'm looking at it while you're looking at it.
All right. Well, so am I correct that Alta Architects has the current six-year contract that's expiring? So it's being selected for another seven-year term?
It's selected for a three-year term. That is correct. They were previously known as Munoz. They've changed their name to Alta and they did bid and were selected again for three more years. And then the second entity, West East, is new to working with us.
Okay. That's right. And then, and then I wanted to put up slide four of 11 or page 28.
Yes, sir.
And it would show that the $7 million is, is evenly split between the two firms, 3.5 million dollars each. There we see some language about SBA classifications and details as well as location.
Yes.
And kindly explain how small HB zones certified or minority owned factors, or minority owned, how those factor in your, into your selection process?
So businesses are able to be awarded points on the basis of a diverse qualification and a local qualification. So in this case, each of these entities receive five points for each of those, five for local, five for diverse. So had they not had those opportunities, their score, as you see, they each scored 100, their score might have been 90 in relation to the, in relation to the, the qualifications request, but they did receive those, so they each received 100.
Well, and maybe we can pursue this further, but on the evaluation criteria that you show, it says experience in qualifications to perform the services, it's 100. You footnote that, that we're unable to consider price or economic development as criteria because this is an RFQ, right?
Oh, yes, you're right, sir. Yes, it's a qualifications.
And you can't consider price?
That's right. You're correct. I did, I did misspeak.
And why, why can't you?
Because as qualifications, we're validating that everyone is eligible to do the work.
But that's CPS Energy's choice to do that?
For qualifications?
No, as far as considering price in a.
No, that's the law. For a qualifications commitment, you are, you're specifically only reviewing qualifications. You're not reviewing other price factors, et cetera. And in the case of, when it comes to price on these contracts, each project is bid separately. So we'll, we'll ask for bids for a specific contract.
And I'm about done, but I don't, and I don't see what you're talking about. It says experience in qualifications to perform the service, 100 points.
Yes, sir. You're right. I misspoke previously when I talked. It would be, it would be a, a bid for proposal where they would be able to be eligible for a points awarded. You're correct.
So here's my main and final question. For $7 million, and it's a three-year architectural contract, why did CPS Energy get only four bidders?
Probably because.
And that seems unusual to me.
No, it's actually, getting four bidders is pretty, something to celebrate. We're a small entity when it comes to this kind of work and there aren't a lot of local firms that can do it. The ones that bid, we're happy to get, but we're a small entity when it comes to trying to bid this kind of work, sir. We're small potatoes. We do a couple million dollars in projects a year. That's very tiny for this type.
But to be specific, at architectural design, it's a small. So in other words, the bigger firms are chasing a 20, 30 million dollar opportunity, not something under 10 million.
That's correct, ma'am. So, so we're about to.
So.
Ask for your approval to the, to a new facility at WT Montgomery Road. That has been put out for qualification and proposal and that unto itself is a larger bid and we, we had many, many bidders, but that's a large project. These are small, very small projects. This is a great opportunity for us to work with our small local firms.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question. And I know Mr. Steen asked this question a few minutes ago, where it says CPS Energy is unable to consider price and economic development as evaluation criteria. Explain that again to me.
I'm sorry, sir. I can't hear you very well because you're not on mic.
It says, in looking at this, it says CPS Energy is unable to consider price and economic development as evaluation criteria for RFQ.
That's right. When we ask for qualifications, we're only asking for the businesses that are, that are putting forth their, their requests to show us that they can do the kinds of work we're asking them to do. We're asking them to prove their capabilities, their history. We do go through a qualification process where financial services validates they're financially viable, security validates that we can interface with them, the safety team will validate their safety performance in relation to the work they do. But for qualifications, we are only validating that they are qualified to do the work. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and why is it that we couldn't put this page behind that procurement?
I'm going to defer to Board Relations. I, I don't.
I'm just, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't organize the book, sir. I'm going to defer to.
I will just remind everyone that prior to the last few meetings, we have done, this is exactly how we have done this for the past four, five years, where our practice has been to put procurements largely on consent agenda. It was a recent change to pull all items off consent agenda and to put them on the regular agenda. That is why your packets now feel a little bit disjointed. We can make the adjustments that you need, but I would suggest consideration for how you want to approach them on the agenda to be the driving factor of how we set up the packets.
I think that all questions have been asked. If there are no more further questions or statements, if we can go ahead and go to roll call.
We have a motion and a second to approve trustee Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excited?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, trustees. I, I come before you today seeking your approval to issue contracts on a power generation engineering services rebid we just completed. As you can see here, we issued a request for proposal to obtain bidders for engineering support services to support not only our.
support services to support not only our ongoing plant operations, but also our generation plan and moving forward with the acquisition of new facilities. So we've been operating under a $36 million, five-year agreement that is set to expire in August of 2026. Because of the significant increase we've experienced in work volume and for the reasons Ms. Lewis outlined around cost and such and the market conditions, we move forward to rebid these agreements. What we're looking at today is a $125 million contract estimating about 225 projects during this three-year period. We have 17 bidders that responded. We're proposing to issue contracts to 13 of those. Of that group, nine are local and two are classified as diverse. And so what we'd like to do is move forward with this award and kick off this here in later this month.
Any comments, Mr. Steen?
As always, thank you, Mr. Etheridge, for your thorough presentation and outstanding work for CPS Energy. Looking at this slide three, the first question, the current contract expires August of 2026. Is this calendar year 2026 or fiscal year 2026? Oh, that would be fiscal year 2026. I'm Calendar date. Apology, sir. So if it's the calendar year, again, why are we dealing with this matter so far out from the expiration date? Because we have required more funding than originally anticipated due to increased scope of work and increased cost.
The activity associated with our plants getting older, so we're having to do more to them just to keep them maintained, the regulatory requirements of, you know, all the work we've got to do to before summer and before winter, you know, to, you know, tell the ERCOT that we've done our jobs, the new assets that we've bought that all are going to require their own, you know, investment plans and engineering work. You know, it's either we bring in a new contract now or the existing contract's going to run out of money. So, you know, our team is being proactive about rebidding it and getting it to you ahead of time because if not, we'll run out of money in, I don't know, four, five, six months and be here anyway. So this is just our team trying to keep up with the amount of work we're having to do.
Instead of seeking an extension, we just went ahead and moved forward with the rebid. All right. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. And I note that you had 17 bidders respond to your solicitation, and you're recommending that this contract be awarded to 13 different firms? Yes, sir. Furthermore, these 13 firms will be required to include diverse subcontracting commitments and utilization of subcontractors will be tracked and incorporated into a vendor performance scorecard. How many of the 13 companies are currently involved? Probably, I don't know, four or five? Four or five of the 13? And is it usual or unusual to award a contract like this to 13 vendors and then mandate the larger business to subcontract with other businesses? Is that usual or unusual? It's usual, particularly when you look at what we're trying to accomplish, which is to push more work into our community.
Mr. Steen, all, let me just clarify because I think, you know, we keep getting, you know, off track on this. All of our prime contractors are being asked to report the work that they're doing in the community to bring local businesses along with them. So, you know, all of these requirements, you know, in part, it's also a requirement of our team to improve our reporting process so they can get credit for everything that they're doing. So these aren't, you know, we're not going to ask one contractor to do something, we're not asking another contractor to do. All of our prime vendors are going to be asked to submit reports on a regular basis telling us who they're doing business with locally so we can keep track of that. I mean, we're a public entity, you know, that everybody, you know, that's part of supply assay organization is working on the reporting requirements so that we can tell what I think is a pretty good story. So there's not any difference in expectations. Every prime contractor that's doing business with us is going to be expected to do this.
Also, is it a fair statement to state that subcontracting is in charity work? Don't these individuals must, aren't they qualified?
Absolutely.
Don't they have to provide financials? Aren't they vetted? So again, I mean, I'm going to sound biased, and I am. I'm a small business myself. There isn't a process that I don't go through where even though I may not be a $30 million business, I have to submit a letter from the bank that says that what my line of credit is, what my credit score is, my certifications, my past performance, and it doesn't in any way, shape, or form devalue me being a subcontractor. As a matter of fact, subbing is a common practice by primes so that they charge $700 an hour and often they pay a small business $100 an hour. So it's a way to save money, and it's a way, again, for economic development growth. I don't oppose to that method, and I don't think it's based because she or he is Asian or he or she is African American. They're qualified at the end of the day.
We also require all businesses to submit who their subs are and approve who they're subbing to. We need to be notified and approve.
Which is common practice at the state level, at the federal level, at the city level. This is all common procurement practices for those of us who respond to proposals and evaluate proposals.
Yes, ma'am.
But we've been doing this for many years? Or is this practice recent? We've been doing this for many years, sir.
The state of Texas has been doing this for many years. As a matter of fact, the state of Texas has several programs where you're vetted highly. The federal level has hub, the state level has hub. So unless the state of Texas does away with those programs, both at a federal level, and I'm talking specifically the designation hub zone, not necessarily other requirements, because I know you like to then quote me on things. So at the state, at the federal level, under the 8A program, you have qualified as hub zone, and at the state level, you have the hub zone program as well.
And then I was going to ask to put up slide six of 11 or page 30, but maybe since it's got the names of the 13 awardees, I won't do that. And the highest score was received, and I consider this a very prominent firm, Pape Dawson, and they got an 82. But the six companies toward the bottom, I don't know how to look at it, but to me, they're failing scores. They've got a 69, a 62, a 62, a 56, a 56, and a 55.
Just want to be, I want to be really clear that the scoring system is not like grades. It's not like a 50 is an F. That is not the case. They each get scored based on the categories of their competence and capability and what they can offer. So just because an entity is scored at a 60 or a 70 does not mean they're incapable of doing the service. If they were incapable, we wouldn't even have gotten them to the next round to even go further to review. They would have been stricken.
And I think most people listening would say you're grading on 100 points. And so you've got
I appreciate it's common
You're including six companies that have, as I said, that run the gamut from 69 or 55. Why, anyway, raises the question, anybody thinking about this or listening in would say, why would we be engaging?
Or anybody listening would say, why is it only one company is more qualified? I mean, it's very subjective, but this process is not subjective. I think we're muddling things. There's a very, there's a very strict process in what they go through, and it devalues the work that Lisa and her team does when there are processes. Everybody who submits to CPS, whether they are awarded or not, are qualified firms regardless of ethnicity. If the world worked on just qualifications, we would all, it would be a great day, but that's not the way the world works. And I do believe that the team puts a lot of effort and time into being unbiased and supports a process. And I mean, if we're going to ask good questions, we shouldn't be pointing out why one company like Pape Dawson is better than another company. That, to me, is biases. Again, there's a process, and we as trustees need to support the process or become a procurement expert and don't be a trustee.
Yes, ma'am. And if they for some reason couldn't meet the expectations or criteria in any of the other categories that are vetted, like safety, security, financials, et cetera, they would be removed from the consideration. So they all meet those thresholds to begin with.
Mr. Mackey, and then we're going to do a vote.
Okay. I have that question along that same line with, you know, I'm just looking at this, just clarification. Here we have this one vendor with a score of 62, getting a $25 million bid, but all of these other ones with higher numbers get less. What makes that person which has less qualification or getting more than all these others? I don't know. I just want to understand.
Understood, sir. In working through what the allocations are for these contracts or for these POs, in some cases, they don't have the staffing appropriate to handle volumes of work, and so they get portions of the work. So a smaller provider might get a $5 million contract where a much larger one might get 25 million in what they're allocated to do because they have the staffing, the resources, the capability, and they're already built up and ready to do that. Smaller providers don't usually have that volume of capability, and we are not their only customer.
Okay. Just one minute. Just one minute. Clarify this right here. You have this one getting 82% on the score, $5 million, and you have one getting 62%, $25 million, and you mean that one don't have the capability of getting the $25 million? Don't have the staff, the experience, the qualifications? I don't understand. I just, that's a clarification on that.
So again, the scoring is not percent. I want to be super clear. That's not a percentage. It's a scoring for those categories that were identified. You know, Company A that you asked about that has a $25 million allocation, has the capacity and the breadth, it's not just national but international, so they have the resources to do substantially more work than a smaller company that does not. And you can add.
Thank you. Yeah. Also, Dr. Mackey, what I would say is that we have volumes of work estimated that each of these companies specialize in, and so the higher numbers, the higher estimated contract value would be for those companies that will be performing more of the work we do a lot of as opposed to the one you mentioned a moment ago, they're rated very highly, they're exceptionally good at what they do, but their area of specialization is something we don't use a lot of.
Okay. You've answered. No, that's, I just want clarification on that. You've answered it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there are no more further comments, sure. Okay. Let's go ahead and do a vote.
I have something I want to say. I could either do it before or after the vote.
After the vote.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I've been on this board for almost nine years, and for most of that time, I've been fine with how CPS Energy's procurements have been handled by management. However, starting a while back and intensifying lately, the policies and procedures seem to have changed, and the change was top-down. I must be heedful in what I say, but this is the reason I've endeavored to bring more of our procurements, many of which involve decisions on how to spend hundreds of millions of dollars out into the open, into the sunshine, as they say. I've asked questions and voiced concerns at Operations Oversight Committee meetings, the two members of which are Dr. Romero and myself, and I've also tried to do the same thing during our board meetings. My main goal is to ensure that the entire process is indisputably fair and above board and that it creates a level playing field for vendors and that wherever possible, CPS Energy gets the best possible price for goods and services. It's my view that given the financial challenges facing CPS Energy in light of its $8 billion of indebtedness and future aggressive spending plans, our customers want and expect us to watch over expenses like hawks, knowing full well that CPS Energy's expenditures make their way into the CPS bills our customers have to pay every month. So what I want to declare is that in the same way, earlier in today's meeting, I voted against the first two procurement items and also the previous procurement item relating to architectural services, I'm going to keep voting against the large procurement items in the future until the concerns I've been bringing up have been addressed and adequately resolved. I believe we can all agree that the five key principles of public sector procurement must be adhered to, namely transparency and fairness, value for money, competition, non-discrimination, and lastly, accountability and integrity. I'm constrained from saying much more about my ongoing concerns, but you can be assured that once these issues have been dealt with, I'll likely return to voting to approve most of the large procurement items brought before this board. And Ms. Romero, I respectfully request that my statement be included in total in today's minute, in the minutes of today's meeting.
Yes, sir. I will discuss your request with the chair, and I do think that some of your comments warrant further discussion in a future executive session because they skirt on legal risk.
Mr. Steen? Mayor?
For clarification, because I'm a little confused about what trustee Steen is alluding to in terms of change in processes. I've been sitting here for a fairly long time as well, and I don't know what we've changed, Rudy, so I don't know if somebody from procurement can come up and explain to me.
We haven't changed our procurement policy since 2017. Nothing's different.
Well, I would respectfully like to ask then because this dialogue continues to waste time up here. Trustee Steen, you know, you have these disclaimers that you come written that you want to read. Happy to sit to that, but it's one thing to complain about things in a generalized manner. It's another thing to suggest what you want to have changed. So my respect for request of you is that if we're going to have an executive session discussion about this, come ready with some things that you want to have changed and be ready to talk about them in public.
Dr. Romero is next.
I was wondering if we could, in a work session, I know it would have to be an executive session as a board, if maybe Lisa could recreate for us the process by which maybe one of these contracts was awarded and so that we could walk through it. It'd be one that was already done, we won't be interfering with a new one. But if you could walk us through like the different scores people had and maybe even the discussions that you had, because I've been through this before with the city. I've been on a committee that reviewed these, and it's hard to know from the outside sometimes what it looks like. So if you could just walk us through one, like a board immersion program, that would be helpful to me.
Well, let me just, to all of that and Mr. Steen's comments, you know, every year this board votes on a budget, and the priorities set forth in that budget all take into account all of this stuff that we have to bring to the board to get approval, to serve our customers, to be responsive, to reflect a growing, you know, community, to reflect the needs of the business community. You know, the perspective of somehow CPS Energy being in financial distress is absolutely not the case. We've had a few of our best years over the last few years because we've made prudent decisions on our generation, because we've been proactive in, you know, creating opportunity for our customers, you know, in the wholesale market and trying to help reliability at the state level. You know, all of these items that we're bringing to the board is just what it is to be in the utility business. It is what it means for our community to own CPS Energy. This is the work we've got to do. And, you know, that reflects, you know, our costs going up, that reflects the demand that are being placed on our system, that reflects the growth. So, and all of that is supported through the budget process. We're not asking you to approve anything that is not contemplated as a priority within our budget. That is the way the process goes. So Dr. Romero, glad to walk you through how a procurement kind of comes, gets going and gets to the board, but all of this is supported through our budget process. You know, again, vote for the budget, don't vote for the budget. I think Mr. Steen's got plenty of, you know, history on not voting for things. That is where these things are either funded or not funded.
And the only thing I want to build it on, and thank you for all the comments, including Mr. Steen's, I do agree that we do have a fiduciary responsibility. I also further agree that we shouldn't always just say yes. So I thank him for always go to, you know, slide two, go to slide five, and asking those tough questions. I think it's great. However, where I have always disagreed, and this is not new, is when you're baiting to bait, trying to paint a picture of not being transparent and not being honest, we go through a lot of meetings. I mean, I'm going to tell you, looking forward to stepping down as chairwoman because I own a business. The amount of time of meetings that we go to, the amount of time that it is required to be prepared as a chairwoman or even a trustee is a significant amount of time, and that is going through PowerPoint after PowerPoint after PowerPoint. of time, and that is going through PowerPoint after PowerPoint after PowerPoint, individual meetings. I will tell you, there is more transparency and engagement on this board than when I was a freshman. When I was a freshman, I was just expected to smile and vote, and no questions asked. And I'm really proud of how we've grown as a board to participate, and how we engage, the calls, the tracking. I have five pages of tracking as a chairwoman of all the inquiries that Mr. Steen has that get addressed. So, there is not a lack of transparency. There is not, not a lack of not trying to make sure we answer all the questions, and everybody is trying to do the best that we can with the bandwidth. So, I do agree that it's great that he can submit attachments all day long. You know what really constituents want? That you vote yes or no, and take a stand, and keep moving on, and execute the plans that we set. We have a fiduciary responsibility for the rate cases that got approved, to, again, execute 2027, and now we have another process where we're asking for feedback so that, again, we make decisions that the community supports. And thank you. I finished with that, and I think Dr. Mackey wants to close.
Can I get that, Mayor? You, you asked a question. You said, what was that that you said again? Did you, when you were speaking a few minutes ago, you said?
Oh, well, I, I asked if there would be suggestions that trustee Steen would have, so we can rectify the issues that he seems to have.
Okay, okay.
Those can be, again, submitted through, again, feedback on policies, which I think all this year, we, we looked at all the policies again. That's feedback that can be received to the future chair. You can add it to the agenda. Again, there's a process for all of that.
Well, but to further clarify, because I hear some undertones of things that you're alluding to, and these are things that we decide as a body in policy, and so if you disagree with the policy that we've stated as a board, we move forward as a consensus. That doesn't give you license just to say, "I'm going to obstruct everything we do in this organization moving forward if you disagree with the policy, with the framework, with Vision 2027." We decided that as a body to move forward as an organization. So, that's something for you to rectify, but if your suggestions are, "We go back to our, our framework and what we're doing with our generation plan," that, to me, is a non-starter.
Mayor, and I, and I know you-
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item.
I know you're busy and just to make, just, oh, just, no, this will take-
We're going to move on. We're moving on.
No, no, I won't.
Nope. We're moving on.
But you missed a couple of meetings, and so these are, maybe you'd have more context.
If there's anything that comes up here, John, whether I'm present or not, and I'm usually here, so.
No, I know you are. I'm just saying you happen to miss some meetings, and maybe you'd understand it better.
Out of respect to the mayor and the board agenda, we've all gave our piece. We've all stated, and, and if anybody, again, wants to hear everything that's been subject, again, that's been added to the meeting notes. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on.
Nice. Hey, so, good afternoon. Today, I'm going to be covering two transmission projects, and one of them is Howard Road to Leon Creek, and it's a transmission line rebuild project. For agenda, I'm going to be covering the routing and siding process comparison, give a project overview, talk about some public involvement, the recommendation, and then seeking board approval. So, just to, to review with the board, you know, we have a, a process where all transmission lines, we're, we're, we're going through this process where we collect data, we have open houses, public input, route evaluations, and then there's a recommendation, board input sessions, and then really approval at the end. But back in 2021, the PUC enacted some new rules, and anything outside the city limits has to go through the PUC. And so there, on the other two boxes on the right, you'll see projects that are outside the city limits in total, and then projects that have transmission that, that is both inside and outside the city. And so we'll follow one of these three processes. So, for this next project, it is, oops, I think I hit the wrong button here. Yeah. So, for this next project, this is an ERCOT reliability project. So, back in September 2023, ERCOT issued five additional transmission projects to help with the reliability, South Texas reliability projects. And then this is one of them. And so basically, what we're doing here is you can see there, the map on the left-hand side there. This is on the southwest side of town. Intersections is around IH 35 and Somerset. And basically, we have an existing transmission line there, and we're adding additional capacity. So, we're going to be changing out the towers, because we have three circuits there today. And because of reliability, we're going to separate out into two separate transmission lines, and then increase the conductor size so that we can bring additional capacity. The target date for this one is in, is to have this all completed by May 26. Let's see. So, public involvement, so we began in, in August, and basically what we do is we get the transmission lines, and we look at all the properties around 300 foot from the transmission systems, and we notify everybody. And then we do a public in, open house. And so there was 85 property owners that were invited to the open house, and we had it at St. Clair Church there off of Somerset. So, it was a very low turnout. Four people came to that input session, but everybody was notified of the project need. And then if you go to our website, you know, we have tons of information there for every transmission project. You're, you're more than welcome to just type in transmission or the project name, and it has all the literature, brochures, and English and Spanish to talk about the need for this project. And then in, in October, we had a board input session here, right after the board meeting, and, but nobody showed up to that one. So, this one is really just, well, like I said, it's an existing project, so we're just adding additional capacity for this project. And this is another picture there. The existing project is 1.77 miles in length, and the reason we're asking for board approval on this one is because we need additional right-of-way. And so the project estimate is $16.8 million. And this is, of course, TCOS recoverable. So, at this time, I'll be seeking board approval to proceed.
Can we, but, so, have she is that here? Ashley, just want to make sure you're taking notes and stuff. Is there a floor to prove?
Second.
Roll call?
Um, just a quick question. I know you do a lot of public involvement, but can you just confirm, for, for today, this date of this meeting, is, is that mailed to the property owners, that they know in advance the actual date of the, the board vote?
The board vote for today's vote? So, we-
Will you repeat the question?
If-
I think what she's asking if-
If the property owners are informed of the actual date of the vote, when, when the board votes on this?
Notice to property owners is not triggered to go unless and until it is approved by this board. So, I think the effective answer to your question is no.
But, but it is posted on our website that we're bringing this to the board, and then, and once approved, then we'll re-notify them to let them know the project was approved, and then start that process. And the process will be negotiating for additional easements.
So, then how about when they were notified of the board input session? At that time, were they then told, I'm seeing a head nodding, that today was the date where we would actually vote on it?
Yes.
There's always a timeline.
Right. There's, right.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've participated on several ones, especially some controversial ones. There's a pretty extensive town hall meeting. There's timelines, even for the original meetings. Everything is public.
Yeah, and I welcome you to go click on, you know, our website, transmission, and you'll see every transmission project. You click on it, and there's dropdowns, and it has all the information, everything you want to know about the project, the routes, all public information, both in Spanish and English.
Any other questions, Dr. Romero? Any other questions? Okay. Could you roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's make sure we're good. So, is that all the procurement items, or one more, Richard?
There's one more routing and siding. They're pulling up the presentation.
SAT 15 routing and sitting project?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Yup. They're pulling up the presentation in just a minute. Okay, so this is another transmission project. It's called SAT 15 Routing and Siding. Similar agenda. We'll cover the, the process, which I will cover in detail, project overview, public involvement, and then this one did go through the PUC, and then asked for board approval. So, this one here will follow the, the, the far right one, which is, the project is both inside and outside the city limits. The project itself is right off of Highway 151 and 1604. This is for a large data center. There were 19 routes, and this one is a, a new transmission rebuild. We'll go through and look at all the routes that are possible to, to feed a substation on that customer's property. And so there were 19 routes that were developed. And then, of course, this was submitted to the PUC. The target date to have the transmission system in is May 2027. And then similar on this one, we did do open houses in June. 127 property owners were notified, 15 participants signed in. We gave additional information. There's a lot of information. We, we, we visited with the HOA, all the information's on our website. There's lots of involvement in this one, because this is in, in the area. Well, I guess we're, we're putting the brand-new transmission system on the far west side. Okay. So, next, the PUC process. So, after we did the open house and got customer input, then we, what we do is develop a PUC packet, and so we'll submit to the PUC requests for extending this transmission line. Environmental assessments are turned in, cost estimates are turned in for each route. CPS will file the, the project need to the, to the PUC, and then additional notifications are sent out to the property owners. So, and here, there was 69 property owners that were identified. And the PUC went through their process. They heard, they had hearings in January, and they finally made their final determination in October. Okay. And so, the PUC selected Project H, and you can see there that kind of purplish line leading to the substation there in the green. It's approximately 1.24 miles in length, the second shortest route, and the project is costed for 37, $35.7 million. And, of course, this is TCOS recoverable. And that concludes the presentation. I'll be seeking board approval on this project.
Is there a motion on table to approve?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Second, if we can go ahead. Is there open for discussion at this point? Any discussion? No discussion? Can we go ahead and do roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move to item number 13. First of all, I sincerely appreciate, Richard, for, for, again, being out there and answering all the questions for, but we, again, we, we talk about answering to the community, and we talk about transparency. We sincerely appreciate you and your team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, for my recognition, I think it's a pretty special recognition for all of us. I'm honored and humbled to recognize and celebrate the more than 350 veterans that work at CPS Energy in honor of Veterans Day in November of this year. Less than 1% of the population in our country chooses to serve their country, but it's no surprising that about 10% of the CPS Energy workforce has served in the armed services. So, this month, we honor you for defending our freedoms. To our veterans serving in a variety of roles across the company, I want to acknowledge the character, discipline, and excellence you bring to CPS Energy every day. To our reservists who actively continue to serve while working with us full-time, your continued service is an inspiration to us all. And to the families of our veterans and service members who must hold down the fort while their loved ones is deployed, your sacrifice for our country doesn't go unnoticed as well. So, as mentioned, veterans and active reservists are an important part of our workforce. We recently received three important recognitions for our commitment to hiring veterans and our support of active military reservists, which will be featured in a, in a video that we'll show here at the end of our comments. Our debt to our veterans can never be repaid, but our gratitude and respect will always last forever. So, please join me in congratulating and thanking our veterans today and every day, and I'm really proud of the fact that our, that our organization works really hard to identify veterans as they transition out of the military and bring them to CPS Energy, where they, where they provide a, a great service to our community. So, with that, a round of applause, and we will move to the video.
CPS Energy was recently honored with a gold medallion by the U.S. Labor Department. The Hire Vets Medallion Award recognizes companies across the country for efforts to recruit, employ, and retain veterans. Lisa Lewis, Chief Administrative Officer, and Mike Garza, Energy Portfolio Analyst, accepted the award. They were joined by team members in a video shared during the ceremony.
We are CPS Energy, the public power provider for the city of San Antonio, Texas, also known as Military City, USA. We are proud to have earned the Gold Hire Vets Medallion Award.
We hire veterans for their leadership experience, strong work ethic, unique skillsets, and dedication. We provide them the training to reach their goals at CPS Energy, and with over 350 veterans serving across our organization, we are proud to continue to serve our community.
One Team!
Speaking of awards, National Guard and Reserve members are able to nominate managers for the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve ESGR Patriot Award. In Medellin Rio, Energy Technical Services Supervisor and Sergeant First Class with the U.S. Army has been deployed many times. He thanked his managers for their support by nominating them for the award. Jose Escamilla, Director of Substation and Transmission Technical Support, and Justin Armstrong, Manager, System Test and Technical Support, were surprised to receive the ESGR Patriot Award during an Executive Leaders Meeting in September. Beginning in October, CPS Energy hosts several activities leading up to Veterans Day in November. Our month-long appreciation is organized by our Vet Connect, People and Culture, and Corporate Communications and Marketing Teams. Veterans' names are displayed at all our facilities. Employees are invited to participate in activities. Some team members wear red on Fridays. Red stands for Remember Everyone Deployed. Some of our veterans are featured in CPS Energy's videos and blogs to share their career journey. This year, gratitude trees were displaced at our headquarters. Team members were encouraged to leave thank you notes for our veterans. And we hosted small gatherings honoring veterans at some of our facilities. And our annual Veterans Day ceremony at headquarters always draws a crowd. The event includes guest speakers and the Breckenridge High School ROTC. The event is a heartwarming show of appreciation for our more than 350 veterans who help to serve our customers and community every day.
Great. I've not- Mayor, you want to say anything? Put you under spot, but start with you.
No, just thank you all for your continued service beyond our service, your service to the nation, but to our community. We appreciate that. You give us great pride in telling people that we're Military City, USA, and, and it shows through your service. Thank you all very much.
Any comments, may further trustees, anything?
Again, just thank you again. It's not just you serving, but also your family. And so please express my gratitude to your children and, and your spouses, because I know that they're part of the mission as well. So, thank you.
So thank you.
And the other was a request that opened at the Risk Management Committee meeting and will be closed at the next Risk Management Committee meeting.
And the other one was the, let me make sure, number seven, election of new Board trustee, chair, and vice chair.
That's from this meeting. That's from this, those were from prior meetings, sorry.
Oh, Kim, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Open items for this meeting, we will include the Board Committee report and Agenda Item 7 onto a future meeting. That was a request from yourself. I have a request from Trustee Steen regarding Agenda Item 10 to include his comments in full in the minutes that I'll discuss with the chair and with Trustee Steen directly. The next action item I have is also on Agenda Item 10 from the Vice Chair, and it was a request for procurement policy and process discussion with the trustees, roughly described it as a walkthrough of a prior award to understand the process. And those are the only action items that I have.
And I wanted to add, if the audience learned today, I've tried this several ways. Part of the chair's responsibility is to decide what items go into the agenda, right? And so there's a lot of items. Some of them are suggested by the team. And what I mean by the team, the internal leadership at CPS. And that happens because there are deadlines that need to be met, such as procurement, regulatory compliances, et cetera. And then there's the discretion of the chairperson. And so this year, as stated again, there's two words we often hear a lot, transparency and the community needs to know. So when I looked at the original agenda, just so you know, I felt like it was really, really, really packed. And we've gone, I've tried several things behind the scenes. Everybody gets the materials through the Operations Committee. I've had people call trustees specifically and walk them through items that I would anticipate they're going to have a lot of questions, or to maybe minimize some of the alleged scrutiny, and it hasn't really worked out. So this, before I walked in, I had two conversations. One was with my individual to the right, which I respect a lot, which is, again, trustee Dr. Romero. And I was telling her, I'm telling you, I decided to pull two items because I knew if we hadn't pulled those other two items under the procurement of, let's just do roll call, then I would have been, again, we would have been accused of a lack of transparency. So wanted to avoid that, and we had the lively discussion. On the other end, there was also some discussion that took place in between that meeting. And so it's not that I'm not in support of the chair of the Personnel Committee, and I'm not in support of the future chairwoman, because I am. It's just, again, I knew that we were going to have a lively discussion. Plus, we talk a lot about consistency and how we did things before in the past, and sometimes things are not consistent. The last two times that we had item number seven was January 25, 2021, January 30, 2023. And as a chair, I do have the discretion. It does not mean, again, that I am, I don't want to be chair forever, believe me, I do not. I'm happy with what I've done. I'm ready to move on. I think you're going to be in greater hands with Dr. Romero. So again, in full transparency, I want the public to understand why I pulled them. So again, I want to make sure we have a recap of, make sure that we have the items that need to be reviewed, and review the action items, just to be clear. Shannon? Before we go into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. So the current open action items, number one was requested by yourself, and that's to forward the Agenda Item 6A and Agenda Item 7 to a future meeting. The second was on Agenda Item 10. Trustee Steen requested that his comments be included in the full, in full, in the minutes. And the final was on Agenda Item 10, and that was the Vice Chair's request for procurement policy and process discussion with trustees, suggesting a walkthrough of a prior award to understand the process.
Again, my apologies, and thank you very much, colleagues. If we could go ahead and convene to executive session, item number 15.
At this time, the board is going to recess into an executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and authorization on real property under Section 551.072, and to deliberate, voter take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It's 2:56 going into executive session.
Okay, if you can please bring us back from executive session.
It is 3:57 and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the post-agenda. We have a quorum while members are present.